The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hi everyone and welcome to another edition of Eye on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hens along with former Oshkosh Mayor and City Councilwoman Melanie Blackell. On Tuesday, April 6th, voters will be heading to the polls and will be voting for a number of races, including Oshkosh School Board, the Oshkosh Common Council, Winnebago County Board, a couple of judicial races, and there are two referendum questions or referenda questions. I always get confused by that. We'll ask the school board member to help us with that. But in any event, the election is coming up on Tuesday, April 6th. Now for the Oshkosh School Board, there are two seats that are being elected. One, of course, is the seat being vacated by current school board president Dennis McHugh. The other is the seat currently held by incumbent Teresa Thiel, and Mrs. Thiel is seeking reelection. One of the people who is running, and she is the last candidate that we're having on the show before the election, is former school board president Karen Bowen. You've been here once before.
Yes, I have.
Just before the primary, and it's very nice to have you back. Melanie wasn't here during that time.
I didn't get a chance to see you.
No.
Now you've got what I had and I didn't do it.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you, Melanie. I'm glad to see you're back from where I was last week.
From Saturday. Well, in any event, congratulations again on making it through the primary. And I guess, maybe we should call you the Karen Comeback Kid or something.
I have no idea.
It was amazing, and I said this on one of our last shows. Last April, just 11 months ago, you were voted out of office and came in last place.
Good last, yes.
11 months later, I mean, things have just completely turned around.
They seem to have, at least in the primary.
Yeah, and you got, I mean, not only did you take the top spot in the primary, but you won by a landslide. You got just over 24 percent of the vote. You beat your closest competitor by something like 1,100 votes, I think, which coincidentally is exactly the number of votes that Ann Rumbuck got too. So, no significance there, I'm sure, but in any event, you know, do you have any sense, Karen, of what happened to cause that turnaround? Or, I mean, any sense at all of what happened?
I have long ago given up trying to prognosticate on elections. I do, I will say, I did ask the voters, when they went to vote, to look at what the school board had done for the last year and see if that's what they wanted. And I like to think that they said to themselves, "No, we're going to vote for Karen Bowen this time." I don't know, but I do, I really am, I was quite humbled and astounded by the whole turn of events, and I'm very grateful.
Sure. Well, you know, as we mentioned in the open, you were here shortly before the primary. Melanie, of course, wasn't here during that time, and there may be some viewers also who didn't get to see that show.
That's right.
So, why don't you tell us and the viewers a little bit about who Karen Bowen is and why you're seeking a term on the school board?
I was elected to the school board seven years ago. I served two three-year terms. I served two years as president, two years as vice president. I've served on many, many committees in the district, including a teacher evaluation committee that looked at the whole teacher evaluation system and redid it, revamped it. I've been on the Partnership for School Improvement, which is a committee that is the partnership of different groups of people in the community, including business, parents, teachers, students. I've been on the, well, I guess, over the course of those six years, I've really been on a lot of committees. Before that, the year before that, I co-chaired the Traeger referendum, the citizen committee that worked on the Traeger referendum. So, that's basically where I'm coming from right now.
Superintendent Ron Heilmann has, he's developed a 20-year vision plan for the district. And among other things, his particular plan proposes closing, I believe it's four smaller elementaries, and then building two giant-type elementaries. Do you have any sense of which schools are targeted for closure? And do you support this kind of plan?
I think at the moment, my answer would be not as it stands right now. The economy is not ready to take on, the local economy, and I assume then the local voters are not ready to take on a referendum. In order to do something like that, you'd have to go to referendum. And I'm not ready for that right now. I think it's, I think we need to be in a holding pattern in terms of building right now, for one thing. In terms of closing schools, that would be, and I've always said this, that would be my last resort. I think we have a very interesting community in terms of the diversity of the schools, the diversity of the communities. We're a very rare community in that we have, our school district, I should say, in that we have urban schools, very urban schools, very suburban schools, and very rural schools. The two rural, of course, being Green Meadow and Sunset, Sunset in Tipler right now. I'd love to see us be able to redo Sunset in a location that is more in that particular area, but it won't happen right now. And I think I can understand and appreciate Dr. Heilmann's vision in that regard. We're not, we're not ready for that right now. The economy's not.
Okay. With, you spoke of redoing Sunset School, and I believe if I understood you correctly, not necessarily at the exact location.
No, no, no.
Okay. I just wanted to qualify that.
No, thank you very much, then.
Okay.
Rebuilding in a different spot. Let me be very clear.
But in the proximity that it's presently located.
Right.
You have quite a bit of property out on Riff Road. And I say "you" only because as a candidate for the school board, obviously, you personally...
Yes, I wish, no, I don't.
It's about 40 acres, is it not?
Probably, yeah. And it's about the right size for a small school, smallish school on that spot.
40 acres for a smallish school? That's a lot of property, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that can be done with, same sort of thing as at Traeger. The kinds of things that are done at Traeger that are, that work with the community. If we didn't, wouldn't need that much land, you could sell pieces of it, as we did with the Newport site when we built Traeger, because that had gotten too small. I do still have the hope, not just the hope, I really believe that the Riff Road area is going to take off. I mean, everyone's been saying that for, what, 15 years?
I was just going to say, that's kind of been a come and see her kind of thing for at least 10 or 11 years that I'm aware of.
Yes, but with all that new highway construction out there, and the ease with which you can get in and out now, I think, I think the community, once again, when the economy picks up, things will take off in that direction. It's a beautiful spot out there. There's some beautiful home sites out there.
For people who aren't aware, just kind of tell them where Riff Road is.
It's out off, geographically disabled here.
Oh, good. Another directly challenged.
Yes.
Right, left, right, no north, south, east, or west for me.
Over by the gas station there. No, turn left. It's out, the old 110, and Riff Road kind of goes off by Castle Piers.
Right, exactly.
There we go. Okay, good. And even when you drive around back in there, it's also near the site of the new community church, Oshkosh Community Christian Church. Beautiful, beautiful place. It's a little rolling out there, and you can see the lake from certain spots. Very pretty.
Karen, you had stated earlier in your kind of going through the different committees that you sat on, that you sat on a teacher evaluation committee that basically revamped their evaluation. What changed? Because teachers are obviously the integral part, as well as the students, to the education process, what did you change in those evaluations? What was lacking? What needed to be changed?
One of the things that changed was the district took a look at what the Department of Public Instruction was coming down the road with, in terms of the PI 34, the new teacher licensure requirements, and looking at the different ways that teachers were going to be evaluated as they continued on their career paths. And one of the things that the Department of Public Instruction said, and something that Oshkosh had been encouraging teachers to do anyway, was to put together a portfolio that showed, that shows what they've accomplished. And not just what they've accomplished, but what their kids have accomplished, what their students have accomplished, how their students have grown over the course of the year, special things that they've done. Teachers will put in these portfolios, notes that they get from parents, articles in the newspaper about classes or whatever, and to put together an actual product. So that instead of being evaluated on a scale of one to four, which sometimes, especially when you have kids coming through, because you never know for sure what kind of a group of kids you're going to have coming through, whether they're going to be, are they going to just shine, are they going to run with everything you do? Are you going to set goals for spelling one year and then find out that this group needs work in math, and then you're going to be downgraded because you didn't reach your spelling goal, you know, when you really, math was the most important thing to do? Gives teachers a lot more flexibility in what they can do. One of the other things that we started working on at that point also was the teacher mentoring program that the district has in place now. And again, that was something that was coming down from the Department of Public Instruction. So we took a look at all of those things. And it was a committee of administrators, teachers, and I was a board member, and I have some experience in the human resources area, so, in evaluation in particular, so I...
Were any parents involved in this evaluation process?
No.
Is there a reason why?
Simply because it was an internal committee, I think. I don't think...
Due to the fact that it's a personnel issue?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it's a touchy issue. There were several teachers on the committee, and myself, too, who are parents of kids in the district, so...
How do you, I guess, it's one thing for administrators to feel as though teachers have succeeded based on certain criteria put together. How do you evaluate whether the parents and the students themselves feel as though they have been successfully taught and met goals? I mean, because sometimes parents' goals for their children may be different than the children's goals for themselves.
Oh, yes.
Kids know very well what they feel like they need. Sometimes they just assume not learn the math because it's not as much fun. But my question is, is how do you determine satisfaction with the parents? Do they feel as though their children are being well-educated?
There are a number of teachers who actually ask parents to evaluate them, or submit comments, whatever. There are teachers, there are teachers at the upper grades who actually hand out evaluations, you know, write something about me, what do you, you know, for my evaluation, tell me what you think. That's one way to do it. The other way, there's another way. One way to look at it, too, is have parents expressed satisfaction to administrators, have parents complained about this teacher, have there been a lot of complaints, have there been no complaints? Have the complaints, sometimes complaints aren't justified. You know, people will complain about something that's not necessarily, I think we've all experienced that in every job we've ever had, and it's been an unjustified complaint. And those, you know, are there complaints like that? Are there, I think probably the best way, however, is to take all the measures that kids, on which we evaluate kids these days, starting with the stuff that we have to provide for the federal government and the No Child Left Behind legislation, the state tests that we give kids, the various, for example, the writing emphasis stuff that many schools do, that we have as a goal in the school district. How are the kids in a particular classroom doing on those, on those particular evaluation measures? How are they doing on the IOAs? How are they doing, how are the kids who graduate from this high school doing on the ACT, the SAT? And those, of course, we're always way ahead of everybody. Oshkosh is very good in those measures.
Well, let's presume that there is a problem, just for sake of argument. Let's presume that there has been a number of complaints about an individual teacher. What happens at that stage?
What happens is the teacher is put on what is called a plan of improvement. And it could be the principal, or assistant principal, or another teacher who works with that teacher. And they work toward improving whatever it is that's missing. And generally, teachers do at the beginning of the year, or as part of their portfolio, they may set, they often usually set goals for themselves, this year we're going to accomplish this, or that, or the other thing. And so, if those things aren't being met, and there's no particular reason for them not being met, the class didn't turn out, you know, sometimes, when you've got a group of 22 kids in a classroom, it could be anything from soup to nuts. I mean, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, because there is a whole, you know, there is a range that you get in, a group of kids. And kids come and go, especially in some schools. But the teacher would be put on a plan of improvement, and then there are goals set. And the teachers usually, teachers work toward those goals. The idea is to make the teacher the best teacher that he or she can be, not to weed people out, or to get rid of people, but to help teachers meet their goals.
Have you ever had to weed people out?
There have been teachers weeded out in this district, sure.
You know, kind of along that same line of thinking there, Karen, you know, you mentioned about complaints. If you get complaints from parents or students, you know, taking appropriate action. Not having children in the Oshkosh area school district, I don't know the answer to this question, so it's coming from the heart. Do you, as a district, ever send out, or have you ever sent out, a questionnaire to parents, asking them not just how they feel about the district and the policies and procedures that it's implementing overall, but about the individual teachers that their child or children have?
I think that used to be done much more, and I don't know, I can't say with any certainty that it was done on a regular basis, but it was done more in the past. Though what's happening with evaluation of employees these days is no longer so much that they're being rated, especially, what, one thing that's pretty much gone from the human resources, except for on that crazy TV show where your, what's his name says, "You're Fired."
Oh, The Apprentice.
Thank you, The Apprentice, yes. There's not much ranking of people against each other anymore. You know, I'm not going to rank the two of you as co-hosts or anything.
Thank God for that, huh?
Or rating, you know, you don't, okay, on a scale of one to five, are you a four, are you a three? What does all that really mean?
Well, sure, but I mean, not just ranking, but ask open-ended questions, you know. How do you feel the teacher is doing? You know, what do you think they could be doing better? Things like that. And, you know, why? Ask them to explain why.
I don't think that, I don't think the teachers' union is quite there, ready to deal with that sort of stuff, that is, that has it fraught with difficulty.
Not there, or they don't want to be there?
Well, I don't know. And I think that probably, that, there are two things that I want to say about that. One is that, once a long time ago, I was involved in instituting an evaluation system like that, where it was all open-ended and it was very, and it was so much work, it was beyond belief, because people wrote books. They just wrote, and wrote, and wrote. And it was, and you end up with a stack of stuff that you then have to, you know, so if you've got 15, 20, 30 teachers in a school, and you've got stacks of stuff, 20 kids in a classroom, you know, multiply that, it's a ton of work, and to try to sift through all that, somebody has to do that, if it's going to be meaningful. That was the thing that we found with our wonderful, open-ended questions, was that some of the stuff was really good, but it was so exhausting to try to weed through it all, and to, maybe I shouldn't say weed, but to go through it all and to figure out what was useful and what wasn't useful. I think that's the sort of thing that you would do once in a while, maybe every five years, or something like that. And then you get into that whole thing again of what was the makeup of the school at that time? What was the makeup of the parent group? How readily, how able were parents to respond to that sort of thing? A school district is sort of a fluid, moving target, in a sense, in terms of the specific grade that goes through at a time. I mean, in general, we have the parameters, or the characteristics of the Oshkosh area school district, but even that, you know, if you look at the school district 10 years ago and what it is now in terms of demographics, that's changed dramatically.
Are you talking socioeconomic, ethnic?
Oh, the whole thing, the whole thing.
Just the whole complexity of it?
And in general, I was saying to somebody this afternoon, that my son, who's 23, when his kindergarten class started, he was at Learning Train, a daycare center downtown, and there were kids, you know, kids from all over the city, kindergarteners from all over the city. And they were an amazing group, the kids, the kids in that particular group, it was kind of like, they left those Learning Train teachers kind of drained every day, and they went out into this world and did crazy things. And they kind of carried that characteristic all the way through to the end of their, end of their high school career. And then my daughter's class was quite a bit different than that. They were both really wonderful and nutty in their own ways, but that's, there's almost, I sometimes feel that there's almost a characteristic, like, sort of, some groups have more really smart kids, some kids have, some groups have really talent, you know, different artistic, I don't know, it's really, it's very intriguing, but they almost have a characteristic across the community. And so that's one of the things you're dealing with, too. It's hard to explain. It's very fluid.
I want to get into a couple of different things here, but the gifted and talented programs and charter schools. Now, I just have, in the last 24 hours, before we started taping this show, heard about this, because my nephew is in the gifted and talented program at one of the elementary schools. And so, I'm very unaware of what exactly is happening here. I just know that it seems like some of the gifted and talented programs are being cut, and I could be wrong on that. I know that there's a meeting going on, even as we're taping this, as a matter of fact, that is enlightening parents as to exactly what's going on. But there are two charter schools, from the way I understand it, that are going to be starting up with the next school year. One is called Advanced Accelerated Learning Program, and the other is Journeys. Now, are these both for gifted and talented, or I guess I'm confused?
Alps is, the first one, which is known as Alps, is particularly, specifically for gifted and talented. The second one, Journeys, is for kids who want to operate in a different way within the schools. It will...
So that is a true charter school?
Yes, well, and this, this is, this, here we have the proposal for Alps. So, the idea really is that kids will be able to perform at their own levels. And both of these operate on that premise. This, the Journeys is for the older children, and this is for the elementary kids. The Journeys program is being thought of now as a replacement for the Quest program, which is the program for kids, dangerously at-risk kids who have failed in the high school or are at the technical college. And Quest is a really beloved program that has done some really good stuff with kids. Because they go away from the school, No Child Left Behind will not allow the district to count those kids. And they will, they will see those kids as having left the district, having failed, and not meeting the criteria. And I have some problems with that, on one hand. On the other hand, I have talked to some kids who have, I have a nephew who is extremely gifted, but who did not finish high school. He went, and then a year later, he said, "I need to finish high school," and got his GED in about a minute. Unbelievable. And really regretted the fact that he hadn't finished high school in that way, and then gone on and done other things himself. So, this would allow kids to stay in school, to graduate with their high school class, to count it.
Journeys.
Journeys, yeah.
All right.
Journeys is the, Journeys is the 6th through 12th program. And it's project-based. And that means that kids can do a number of different things, as, this particular things is that they can do in groups, individually, choosing, planning, researching, completing, academic study, and hands-on projects that result in tangible, real-life products. So, you know, whether that's art, or whether it's something to do with a car, or whatever, they will be doing, learning by doing more than sitting in a classroom. And for many kids, that's really important. There's a whole movement in the district, too, to restructure grade 6th through 12th. Ron Heilmann always says that high schools haven't changed in over 150 years, and society certainly has. And how can we meet society's needs if we keep operating as we did 150 years ago? And this is one path toward doing that.
So the gifted and talented programs, then, are they actually going to be leaving each individual school and then being sort of centralized?
Well, they, there will still be opportunities for each classroom, each school, to have, to have gifted and talented programs. Each child needs one. And there are other, there are, one of the interesting things about gifted and talented kids is that there are different levels of gifted and talented kids. There are kids who can complete high school by the time they're 12. You know, those would be the extremely, profoundly, I think is the word they use, profoundly gifted.
Yeah.
And it's, and we have had kids like that in the district. Then there are the kids who are really bright, and you really want to keep them challenged, partly because if you don't, sometimes they get into trouble. But not, but not only that, they're just, they're really, they have lots of talents, and they are really high, and they test really high on standardized tests, but they're not that profoundly gifted. They couldn't finish high school early, or, you know, by the age of 12, or whatever. They're not going to be physicians by the time they're 18. But they're, yet they have, they have different needs than some of the other kids do. Then there are the extremely creative children, who may have some trouble in their basic core courses, but they're really gifted in music or art. So, the idea of, the whole idea has been for a number of years, to keep, to try to meet these different kids' needs. And these two programs are trying to, they're trying to find a way to meet those kids' needs. The Alps program is trying to meet kids' needs in a more, in a deeper and better way than we have been, we have been up to now. We actually have, were, when I, when my kids first started school 20 years ago, 20 years ago, 15, 18 years ago, long time ago, they, they're really, the gifted program was really hit and miss. And this, over the years, it's gotten tighter and tighter, and we've had, you know, actual people supplying...
Can I just ask you?
Sure.
But these two programs, they're at opposite ends of the spectrum, trying to do similar things, but for very different groups of children. Journeys is more the at-risk students.
Well, Journeys can be for anybody. Journeys can be for anybody.
Quest is part of the...
Quest, it will, it can serve the Quest kids.
Okay. My question here is, is because budgets are so tight, do these feed off of one another as far as dollars? If you budget for this, will you be able to budget for this?
Yes, both of these are...
And in like, one minute, if you can.
Yes. Summarize the entire, yeah.
Tell us how this is going to work, Karen.
It's going to work well.
Yeah. There you go. But by and large, I'm getting the sense that you like the charter school concept?
Yeah, I really do.
And do you see it expanding within the district?
Yes, I do. The EAA Charter School, the evaluation that was done at the EAA Charter School, those kids are learning their math and science in particular extremely well, scoring much higher on tests than other kids.
Our time is, I mean, it's gone. I can't even believe this.
That went way too fast.
Why don't, zip. Why don't you take about 30 seconds, real quickly, look into camera three, tell folks why they should vote for you on Tuesday, April 6th, Karen?
Because of what's about to happen in the district, in terms of, not just in the district, but in the state of Wisconsin, we're going to be under really tight budget times. We have a lot of complex things going on in the district, the school district, needs people who have experience, and of all the characteristics, excuse me, all the candidates for school board, I have the most experience at the school board level. So, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you for being here again, and good luck on Tuesday, April 6th.
Thank you.
We're going to take a real short break, and when we come back, we will be joined by Phil and Lisa Levine from Jeff's on Rugby, and we'll be talking about the smoking ban referendum, referenda, that are coming up on the ballot on April 6th. We'll be right back. We'll be right back.
Good evening. Follow me, please.
Imagine what America would be like today if Martin Luther King never had a dream. Help keep the dream alive. To find out more about the Martin Luther King Memorial in Washington DC, call or log on now.
Oshkosh Community Access TV 2 is your local sports channel. Follow your favorite Oshkosh teams each week as CATV 2 presents the high school game of the week. Besides football and basketball, we feature soccer, gymnastics, swimming, wrestling, and volleyball. Sundays at 8:00, Mondays at noon, and Wednesdays at 8:00, CATV 2 is the place to be for high school sports. The high school game of the week, here on Oshkosh Community Access TV 2.
I want to...
Have an impact.
Make a difference.
I want my voice to be heard.
Take matters into your own hands. Smack down your vote for the candidates who represent you and the issues you care about. Make time on Election Day to vote in elections in your community.
Have an impact.
Make a difference.
Let your voice be heard.
To learn more about the candidates where you live, contact the league in your state or community through LWV.org.
Smack down your vote on Election Day.
The Friends of OCAT is a nonprofit group that supports Oshkosh Community Access television programming and facilities. The Friends sponsor membership, underwriting, and fundraising projects. Their mission is to provide quality programming, to plan and implement fundraising activities, to develop a supportive membership, and to raise awareness of OCAT. If you would like to become a member and support Oshkosh Community Access Television, buy an OCAT card and enjoy discounts at many local businesses. Thanks for viewing OCAT.
Welcome back to the second half of ION Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hans, along with Melanie Blackwell. We are joined now by Phil and Lisa Levine, the owners and operators of Jeff's on Rugby. And this is, I think, the third time back for you, Phil, and the second time for you, Lisa.
Yeah, I want a shirt.
Well, they're 30 bucks. We don't get them free either, and it's our show. You know, we want, we want to talk, we want to give you guys one more kind of kick at the can here, as far as the smoking ban thing goes. It has been a tough road ahead for the last nine, 10 months, whatever. And first of all, you, most recently, I think since you were on the last time, Phil, you were successful in getting enough petitions signed, enough signatures on the petitions to get your referendum on the ballot, sort of as a, I don't even want to call it piggybacking theirs. It's a separate referendum, accomplishing or seeking to accomplish the exact opposite of what they're trying to accomplish. Why don't you just tell folks, in a nutshell, what your referendum question will do?
Well, ours is very simple. Basically, it reads that the city of Oshkosh will not enact a smoking ordinance until a statewide or federally mandated smoking policy is enforced. We feel that that would give everybody in the city of Oshkosh equal opportunity to compete with other municipalities close to us. If it's a statewide ban, then we're all on the same footing. You have to understand, we are not pro-smoking. We're not anti-ban, per se. We're just, we're anti-small bans. You know, different municipalities being hit with different ordinances, which doesn't level the playing field. We'll compete with anybody as long as it's on a fair basis.
You know, I, I think the, the best way that you can liken this, you know, people have said, well, you know, the restaurateurs are pro-smoking, and you've just said you're not pro-smoking. I think what you're anti is anti-mandate, just like all of us. You know, when I was on the city council for all those years, the thing that used to just irritate the living hack out of every council member, the city managers, the administration, is when the state government would mandate that we had to do something, but guess what? There was no money that went along with that mandate to implement that program. They would bust our hump with these mandates. And there was no, so we had no choice but to turn around and charge the taxpayers because we had to facilitate the paperwork, and we had to facilitate the hiring of more people and more equipment. So I think the best way I could probably liken this is, you're just like anybody else. You're anti-mandate. You're being mandated to do something in your private business that pits you directly against other people in very close proximity. Fond du Lac, Nina Minasha, and guess what? There's no flow to any of these ordinances.
None.
There's no, there's no continuity, there's no consistency. And what's really funny is, they don't want it. Breathe Free Oshkosh does not want consistency, or continuity, or understanding. They want a ban. They don't care what it does to you. They don't care what it does to your clientele. And what bothers me about this is that you guys came to the table, because we've had this discussion before, and said, you know what? We understand no smoking in the dining room. You guys were cutting edge. You did this before anybody else did it. You volunteered.
Yes.
You did this long before anybody else. Nobody had to tell you to do it, you did it.
And, and since they have come forward, and it failed at the council level, immediately after it failed, it should be noted once again that you folks gave the people in this city yet another opportunity, and that was, you started offering smoke-free lunch hours, and on Thursday nights, completely smoke-free dining, and not, I mean, that's kind of a misnomer, I guess, because your, your dining rooms are always smoke-free, but smoke-free environment.
Yes.
No smoking at the bar during lunch hours and on Thursday nights. And along with that, you went so far as to change your menu items, so that you offered all of your other nightly specials, so that people coming in on Thursday nights for a completely smoke-free dining experience could...
Had choices.
They had choices. But yet, they don't want to give you choices. And, and where I was going with this originally was the fact that here you did all that, and your business really didn't see a noticeable increase. Now, Breathe Free Oshkosh would like to say, well, your business was up 25%, but why don't you explain very briefly what that 25% really means?
No, go ahead.
It's, 25% to us, at that time, was about 16 customers per evening. It's not like we had to double our staff, or, as Brian Peschel said, we were not, our city councilman, we're not busting at the seams, because he came in to see how this experiment was going. He expected to see double the volume. With all the rhetoric he was getting from the Breathe Free side, the number of people who just couldn't go out to eat because of the smoky environment, he thought we would have a waiting list for tables and that kind of thing. It never materialized. Well, this went on from September 11th.
Isn't that something?
Yeah, we, we used September 11th.
It just happened.
And then, about Thanksgiving time, we decided, okay, let's start asking our customers why they're really here.
Well, we were doing it right from the get-go when they were coming in. We made sure that we were down there, and anybody who was at the council meeting or has been listening to this, we voiced numerous times that we are on the forefront, we are down there. No one's ever brought this to our attention before. If you have something to say to us, come and say it to us. And sincerely, they have come and talked to us. We've gotten it from both ends. We're ready, but people are telling us, you know, there are some people that come out specifically for that. For the no-smoking environment. Correct. They do, there are some. But four people is not enough to run a restaurant.
Well, exactly. And then, you, you have to, you can't do this any other way. You have to factor in, I believe, the fact that if every other restaurant in town is no-smoking, those people...
Now, I got to share those four people.
Well, sure, because they may end up going somewhere else. There's no guarantee that they will continue coming to your place.
Correct.
That Thursday night has given us conversation to people who come in and want to discuss the smoking issue with us. And typically, it happens on a Friday, Saturday, and Monday night, any other night but Thursday. They'll come in and they'll talk about it. And I just recently had one on Friday night, again. And I said, well, if this is such an issue to you, then why don't you come in on Thursday nights? I've given you a night. Let the market then dictate that Thurs, that you want this. And I should be so busy on Thursday nights that I'm saying, gosh, we're so busy on Thursday nights, Phil. You know, really, let's think we're doing this on another night. And then, if we do that, then other restaurants will be saying, well, what are they doing different? That's what we're doing different. The market still has not dictated that this is something they want. When I ask the people that, they come, well, we want to come out on Friday or Saturday. I said, okay, so now you want no smoking on the night of your choice. There's that word again, but they want that choice. And I will say to anybody who asks me, and it's, it's been constant since September 11th, gotten some very positive response. I got one just yesterday, actually, one that, that one made me feel really good. This was somebody who was wants no smoking, wants the ban, but is not going to vote for the ban to go through. She specifically told me last night she has changed her mind.
Did she say why?
Because she believes that it is not fair that it's not a level playing field.
Well, good for her. And, and the other thing that makes it not a level playing field is the fact that this ban, if Breathe Free Oshkosh's referendum question is approved, will prohibit you. It will absolutely forbid you from even selling cigarettes in a vending machine on your property. And honest to God, I don't, well, when the Breathe Free Oshkosh people were here, and I pointed that out to them, the one didn't even know...
Joseph Smith.
Yeah, he didn't even know that it was in there. He hadn't even read what they are trying to shove down people's throats at the ballot box next month.
Shirley also states that we cannot tell them to leave our building.
Explain that now.
Yeah, this is... That's a hard, that's a hard one, because, I mean, how, they, they don't want us to discriminate against them if they are a, if they're a non-smoker, they come in, I can't, for instance, if Kathy Prop should walk into the building, I cannot say, you know what? I'm not going to serve you. Because of the non...
Whereas, right now, you can refuse service to anyone for any reason.
Correct.
I mean, within reason, I'm assuming.
Right. Well, you know, we should, we, we should hold that right, because what if someone is being disruptive for any reason, to any of the customers? And unfortunately, it does happen, where you have to go and ask someone to leave. You're going to take that away now, too? Sure. And, and it'll all be under the guise that it's retaliatory, because I'm a non-smoker, and therefore, you're just discriminating against me because, you know, I, I wanted a ban. It doesn't have anything to do with, I'm a jackass and I've been a real pain all night. You know? There was, there was a customer in on a Friday lunch one day, and I'm not kidding, I said to Phil, I said, we're going to have to watch. I, I was certain this person was going to just, could not find a reason to come up and yell at us enough, but just, she wanted, we, it was a non-smoking lunch hour, our Friday noons are still non-smoking, because we're still open our Friday noon hours because of our fish fry. And she walked in, and she was, she said, I want no smoking. I always say, both our dining rooms are non-smoking. Get me as far away from the smoke as possible. There is no smoking in here, ma'am. None, not even in the bar. She was not happy.
She was itching for a flip that day, and didn't get it.
And see, that's me. She just couldn't find anything wrong. That's what's so unfortunate. And I think that the part that bothers me the most is that when two entities that are polar opposites in their opinions come to a table to have a discussion, one would assume that both parties are coming with an open mind and some level of compromise being made. But we tried. And, and that was going to be my point. Now, I know, and, and we even talked about this with the Breathe Free people. Okay, you guys all came to the table, what happened? Well, they were real nice, and we were real nice, but the bottom line was, they didn't want what we wanted, and we don't want what they want, and there is no compromise. So, okay, so the restaurant people are saying, okay, we understand, you don't want people smoking in the dining room while you're eating. That's not a problem. We can work around that. But we do think that there should be smoking allowed in a bar, okay? And in some instances, if we can wall off an area that people want to smoke in dining areas, but it'd be walled off. No, Breathe Free says, no smoking at any time, for any reason, even if your building's on fire, it's not allowed to smoke.
Interesting point.
This is, this is exactly the kind of Gestapo tactics that just irritates me. You know, and, and they, they talk about this, they're, they're prefacing this all in public safety, in public health. And, you know, how dare you rotten people hire these kids and then force them to be subjected to cigarette smoke?
Again, we, we brought up that point. You know, nobody's forced to work in our establishment. The most we should have to do, and we've, we've suggested this at our negotiation sessions, after we beat them at the city council level, we will, we'll make handbooks for the employees, making them understand the environment they're walking into. They would have to sign a waiver, was one of the things we offered. If they're a minor, then their parents would have to sign the waiver, saying it's okay for them to work in this environment. We don't, we're not forcing anybody. Again, that was turned down.
I suppose you could just not hire minors at all. They have to be 18 or 21 in order to work there.
It's just, it's foolish.
It was interesting, because just recently, we just hired two new employees, and Phil brought it to my attention before the interview happened, that that was a question I should be asking. If the smoking ban should go through, will this affect you? Can you go a whole shift without a cigarette and/or, you know, you got to ask these questions now. Never... Yeah, go figure, because sometimes the employees actually smoke, too. Oh, go thank you that.
Well, they could still go outside and smoke, could they not?
Correct.
As long as they're not smoking within the building. It's not that the smoking...
They can smoke by your front door, where everybody can walk past them.
That's an interesting point. We've been reading some articles. If this smoking ban...
We're waiting for this one.
If the smoking ban should go through, there are places in this town right now that are completely smoke-free. Many non-smokers choose to go to those places. The smokers don't go to those places. Now, if, if everybody's smoke-free, those smokers say, well, it doesn't matter, make a difference where I go now. So they might go to this non, originally non-smoking establishment and stand outside the door and smoke. So now, people who had never been assaulted with cigarette smoke are now going to be assaulted with cigarette smoke, because...
I think that's a wonderful idea. Go there, Mel.
You know, because they're standing outside, you know?
It's true.
It's going to cause some problems. I, in New York City, they're already deciding how far away from the entrance of an establishment you have to stand to smoke.
See, it just, when, when you take a little bit, it just keeps going, and going, and going, until you are effectively stripped of all your rights.
Well, and, you know, I was kind of making fun of this before, but it's really not very funny, and I really believe this. Phil, what do you, and Lisa, being in this restaurant business as long as you have, the cigarette, the, the non-smoking thing comes up, and it's all public safety and public health, of course, because obviously, you're not taking enough initiative to take care of your employees and your own health. How long do you think it's going to be before Kathy Prop and the gang are no longer satisfied with just Breathe Free Oshkosh, but Fat Free Oshkosh? Now, now, I say this partially tongue-in-cheek, but you guys serve hamburgers, you guys serve steaks, you guys serve prime rib, you guys serve deep-fried fish, French fries, potatoes, we're all German, we like our taters and gravy, don't we? Now, that's probably a cholesterol attack just waiting to happen, isn't it? So how, how long before the food Gestapo comes and starts clamping down on the size of your burgers, how much cheese you can put in? Oh my God, you actually have bacon in there? Before people start dictating what you can actually serve for food? Because, you know, health risks being what they are, you jam enough bacon down somebody's gullet, there's going to be a... You know? In the restaurant magazine that we get at the restaurant, every once in a while, you have a chance to flip, flip through it, and smoking bans are right there in the front, forefront, but that is right there, number one. Number, along, the very first show we taped, and I said, what was number one? And we didn't know at the time. That is number one. Type 2 juvenile diabetes. Kids are, like I said, in, in one of our other shows, I said, kids are about ready to explode at the seams, because they're just, and they're sitting in front of the TV and whatnot.
Sure. And obesity is catching up to smoking as the number-one preventable cause of death.
Well, and, and what's really interesting is, it is so pervasive, the obesity problem and the, the fat and caloric intake of Americans, that our state legislature is actually looking to pass a law so people can't sue McDonald's because it made them fat.
I was just going to mention that.
Because, you know, you guys are going to be next in a lawsuit because you let somebody have prime rib. But we offer boiled fish, and broiled, and we offer shrimp, hot, cold, in the shop. We give you choices. Well, but... There's that word again. Choices are good. All until you make the wrong one. Exactly. But how dare you make the wrong one, because we know what's good for you, even if you don't. And, you know, then we're going to have to get rid of beer, and we're going to have to go to low-carb beer, and, well, and, you know, drunken driving laws being with there. It's just, I guess, you know, I, I, I listen to these arguments, and I understand public health. I work in healthcare. Do I have bad habits? You bet I do. Do I suggest anybody else take up my bad habits? I absolutely don't. They're expensive, they're ridiculous, they're not good for your health. But you know what? I am a legal adult, consuming legal substances. They are my choices, and I will live with the consequences of my choices. And all the Johnny Do Gooders in the world, stay the hell out of my business. Stay the hell out. I'll go to what restaurant I want, I will consume what I want, I will smoke what I want, as long as it's legal, and I will drink what I want. And I won't, you know, and if I get behind the wheel and I've had too much, then, you know, to the pokey I go.[1684.82] But my problem here is, is that this kind of legislation that Breathe Free people are talking about
Were you ready for that one?
I wasn't there ready for that one. She walks off.
I can't help it, because it just irritates me. We, in this country, we have people who fought so hard to ensure the fact that we have a voice and that we have civil rights and we have opportunities. And then you have a group of people who decide to limit those opportunities because they might not be such great choices.
But Breathe Free is very small, and they got this whole town in uproar. And you know what? If you really sit down and talk to the people, they really, you're right, they're hardworking people who can make up their own mind, they're really mad. They're upset, they're annoyed by this. They want this over with and say, you know what? I bet they could go to the polls tomorrow. And they'd be like, no, you're not going to do this. We'll go down Oshkosh. We'll go down, I am hoping, on April 6th, saying, we're the first ones to say, no. We've had enough. We're not going to let you do this. We're not going to let you raise the bar, no pun intended.
Well, I just, I just want to also state for the record here that, you know, we did invite Breathe Free Oshkosh to appear on the program also, not necessarily in a combative debate-type situation here, but we, yeah, I know, that breaks your heart, Phil, I know. No, with all seriousness, we did invite them on. I invited Margie Davy, who has been a spokesperson for the group of late, although she corrected me and said she is coordinator. I'm not exactly sure what she's coordinating, but when I've seen her and heard her, it's been in a public forum in the media, speaking. And when you speak on behalf of a group, then you are a spokesperson, despite what the title is that you want to attach at the end of your name. Mrs. Davy did not want to come on the program. She declined my invitation, saying that this was not, she felt, the best vehicle for them to get their message out, simply because Melanie and I are opposed to the Breathe Free's ban proposal.
Strongly opposed.
Yes, strongly opposed. And, you know, I explained to her, and you folks both know, we've had them on twice previously. We have been polite to them, we have been professional. There has not been a bloodbath in this room or at this table. We have had good, meaningful discussion about this, and I think that we've brought out good information about it. However, she did not choose to come on. That's her right. She's exercising her choice. But by God, everybody should have a right to choose, and that includes those of us who want to go to a restaurant where smoking is permitted. So anyway, Margie Davy didn't want to appear. I exercised my own choice then, and that was to not invite anyone else from the group. If the person who is at the council chambers, in the media, and writing some letters, because I know she wrote you at least one, which I was a little confused by her reasoning. She said that she did it as a courtesy, but also because it was a requirement of law. I guess it's one or the other, but whatever. You know, if she doesn't want to come on the show, then I'm exercising my choice, and that is to not invite someone else on the show, because we'd already had them on the show, and I wanted to hear from her. However, she had been at the council meeting when you guys were trying to get your referendum on the ballot. And she made a very interesting statement, she made several interesting statements, but one in particular was, quote, "This ordinance attempts to completely remove the common council's ability to legislate on a public health issue." Well, what in God's name does she think that their group did? The council made a decision on this, did they not, in August?
Yes, they did, in September.
Yes. August or September, whatever it was.
Guess who lost?
Yeah, Breathe Free Oshkosh lost by one vote. And they immediately, instead of doing anything else, immediately moved to direct legislation by way of the referendum that they worked very hard to get on the ballot, and it should be on the ballot. Now, you've got a sample ballot there.
Oh, yes.
What exactly is that that you've got?
I just had to bring this along.
Oh, goodie.
Dave Todd from Razmataz was kind enough Wednesday
Right.
To stop in and drop this off to Phil and I. And this is actually how the ballot is going to look, so I thought I would give this to you. And question one is theirs, and question two is ours. And they, this one, this is how it's going to look. So question one's going to be down here, question two's going to be up here.
Okay, why don't I go ahead and read these?
You go right ahead.
Question one is Breathe Free Oshkosh.
This is Breathe Free Oshkosh, and
Okay, well, let's just read them.
Be careful not to muddy the waters.
What do you mean?
Go ahead and read it. Question one belongs to Breathe Free Oshkosh.
Okay, well, we'll read it and we'll see how confusing it might be, because these questions usually are confusing. Shall the city of Oshkosh adopt Section 14, well, I don't know if it's Point 1.2 or whatever, but of the Oshkosh municipal code to prohibit smoking in all enclosed restaurants except for, A, those facilities where gross sales of food and beverage service does not exceed 20% of the facility's total gross sales; B, those taverns whose alcohol sales exceed 70% of total gross sales for meals and beverages; C, those establishments with separately-ventilated smoking rooms, provided the separate room meets the requirements of a tavern; or D, those restaurants which experience a greater than 15% loss of gross receipts in the three month period following adoption of this ordinance. I would vote no, just because it's worded so convoluted-like.
It should be yes, no, or huh?
Can you put a question in?
So if people don't, I mean, but really, in reality now, this is a referendum question that is pretty straightforward, because there's no confusion about this. I mean, usually they're worded with a lot of legalese. And question number two is, and this is yours, shall the city of Oshkosh adopt Section 14-1.2 of the Oshkosh municipal code to provide that privately-held businesses may establish their own smoking policy, and that the city cannot establish a smoking policy for privately-held businesses until such time when there is a mandated smoking policy adopted at the state or federal level? And so, it looks like if you support the restaurants, you vote yes on question number two and no on question number one.
Correct.
And if you support Breathe Free Oshkosh's cause, you vote yes on number one and no on number two.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's pretty straightforward. Can you get us a copy of that?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
You didn't think that that was, question number one seemed to go
Oh, no, it does. It goes on and on and on.
Well, not only that.
But it is straightforward in the sense that you can understand which way you're supposed to vote. And I guess that's my problem about so many referendum questions, is that
You understand how you vote when the question starts out, shall the city, okay?
But that one starts out like that, too.
Right, and you get it at the first line. But 14 paragraphs later, you kind of lose what it was that they were asking you.
Well, precisely, and maybe that'll work to their disadvantage, I don't know. But all I'm saying, Mel, is it is written in such a way that you, you know which way to vote, because that has been historically the problem with a great many referendums.
When they twist the question and you're not sure, is it yes, a yes, or a no, a no?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of these referendums in my years covering local politics, and that historically is always the problem. And I must credit these folks, whoever has written these, because it's written in a way that you can understand which way you're supposed to vote. We're down to about three minutes, and, you know
Can we just go over one more time? If you support Breathe Free Oshkosh, you vote yes on question one and no on question two. However, if you support choices and the restaurateurs making their own decision, you do
Vote no on question one.
No on question one and yes on question two.
Correct, correct. What kinds of thoughts do the two of you have as far as what, how this is going to impede or impact your business from a bar standpoint? And, you know, do it in probably about a minute.
We're going to be broke.
Well, what happens in our business, you have to understand that a bar restaurant like ours, 80% of our profits are derived from the bar area.
80%?
80% of our bar, our profits are derived from the bar. If people can't smoke even in our bar area, they're going to have their after-dinner drinks or their before-meal conversations at a tavern. And we will lose that bar business. It will impact how our business is being done. We'll have to adjust where our profits come from. They're also not letting us sell cigarettes, which is a profit-making venture. So it will change us that way. There's also, I mean, if we can't do business in the city of Oshkosh properly, I, for the first time in 19 years, I would seriously consider thinking of moving my business outside of Oshkosh. The old Mr. Elmer's facility, which was
Out on Highway 45.
The UAW Union Hall is available.
All right. I'd come out there to see you guys.
You know, it's not that far away.
Thanks for coming again.
Hey, no problem. Thanks for giving us the opportunity.
It's always a pleasure to see you, whether it's in this venue or in your restaurant, which I love. And good luck on April 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, very much for joining us. Exercise your constitutional privilege to get out and vote. It's important. Tuesday, April 6th, as Election Day, polls are open from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night. Thanks to all of you for joining us. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And we thank Karen Bowen for being here in the first half of the show.[1687.33]